You missed me.
I'm sorry, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
All right, at this time, we will salute the flag, so everybody please stand. All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the public which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, at this time, I am going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Del Rossi.
Dr. Redder, thank you very much, and good evening to everyone from the community who's joining us this evening. Mr. Lockevera and I would like to thank you for this opportunity to present a fairly detailed overview of our reopening plan. I would ask that you save your questions until Lockevera and I have finished the presentation, as some of your questions may be answered before the presentation, although I'm sure that many of them will probably be. I realize we have several members of the community this evening monitoring the meeting online. And again, as Dr. Redder said, I apologize for the limit that we have, which is a surprise to us, that we will follow up, and if we need to use this format in the future, hopefully not, we should be sure to be that that will be rectified. So after Mr. Lockevera and I answer any questions the board may have, Dr. Redder will open up the meeting for other comment. I would also like to address a comment that may come up this evening regarding the format for this meeting being online instead of being in person in one of our facilities.
We can't record it or...
Are you holding this meeting online while asking parents to send their children to school?
Yeah.
Not close enough.
But let me ask you...
You've heard about conducting meetings with social distancing protocol, using microphones, and having everyone wear a face covering. Foremost, we did not want to turn people away, as our number of attendees would be limited, as it's limited here that we find out this evening. Second, and I hate to say this, adults do not always follow directions as well as students do. Some may refuse to wear a face covering and gather with neighbors they haven't seen in a while. I've heard about this from other superintendents holding similar meetings. In addition to honoring the social distancing protocol, we did not want to lose the focus of the meeting, having to deal with unexpected variables like some of my colleagues had to. I want to be upfront with you, by no means are we finished our plan. It's a work in progress, especially in light of the fact that the playing field continues to change. As you know, the 100% virtual instruction option changed this past week, involving messages from the Health Department, the CDC, and the Department of Education. Every district, and I speak to superintendents all over the county, is building this plane as it's flying. However, we'll be ready when the bell rings in September, you can bet on that. Additionally, I want to mention our COVID link on our website. It includes all the communications to parents that we've made thus far, and a section of frequently asked questions, FAQ. I think there are 19 questions listed thus far that many parents have been submitting to us. We plan to continue to answer those questions as they're submitted, and hopefully you will send them in. This evening's presentation will also be added to the website after tonight's meeting, in addition to the recording of the meeting. So with that, Sean, I ask that you bring the slide presentation up. Okay, I'm gonna move. Let's talk a little bit about the planning process and how did we get here today. I'd like to briefly review this with you, I'm not going to read the steps of the process to you, I'm only going to skim then and make some comments. I want you to know, as soon as school ended in June, absent the state guidelines, we started planning. Our stakeholders, of course, at that time were key administration board members, teachers, support staff, and many parents, like the HSA group that we are in constant communication with. Of course, the Department of Education provided guidelines for us on the 26th of June, the road back, which many of you are familiar with at this time. In order for our administrators, which is a key stakeholder group, because first and foremost, they have to implement the plan, and second, they're part of the accountability, as I am as well as the board. So what we did is we arranged classroom models for them to see what it would look like, bringing back every student, and then with a hybrid model. So they... A hybrid model. And our administrative team is continuing to build that model as we move through the process. Go ahead, Sean, to the next slide. Over this this evening. They were surveyed on July 16th for returning in-person school instruction. And again, there was no option for fully remote instruction, I want to explain that to you. As I did in the letter, I want you to know that that was not a sanction option for superintendents to give to parents. I did as what I was supposed to do in terms of the ECS, and that Wednesday, prior to that date, we held an executive county roundtable that day, and we were informed that you should not place that option on a survey for your parents because you may have to walk that back at that time. So before I launched that survey, Friday morning, I called him and had a conversation with him about it, and he specifically directed me not to place that option on our survey. And if I did, and it wasn't walked back, then we would not be approved for school opening in September. So I just wanted to reinforce with parents again why that was not an option. So as you well know, this past Monday, over the weekend, about 200 superintendents lobbied the governor to allow us to apply to allow that option to be considered for parents. And on Monday, the governor walked that back and of course included that 100% option. We received this past Friday, so between Monday and Friday, we had no direction in terms of what that actually meant. We received guidelines on Friday, this past Friday for that, on the 24th. And our survey was ready to go, we needed to take that into consideration, and I wanted to speak to our board this evening about the details of the plan. So our revised parent survey that all parents, I am a must really complete, will most probably go out tomorrow. I can't see Wednesday, you know, hopefully tomorrow and Wednesday would be the latest, but we really would like to get it out tomorrow to all parents. And we'll be meeting in the next week or so with subgroups for the entire restart reopening committee to work on the details that I had spoke about earlier. All right, Sean, you can move on. Just one slide, there you go. So what was the purpose of the reopening committee? You know, there's some confusion a bit when I speak to people that felt that the reopening committee was the group that was going to select the option for our reopening, and that's just not the case. That group was put together to provide us, the administration, with feedback in developing a plan and considering competing priorities, the staff and student health and safety, and then balancing the educational integrity and continuity of the instructional program. But I want you to understand, that committee has no accountability. Accountability lies with myself, the board, and my administration. We have to implement the plan, and I know parents are going to hold us accountable for that plan as well. Go to the next slide, Sean. So I think it's important that you see who the members of the committee are. There's classroom teachers on the left-hand side of the slide, as you can see. I really felt that we have a good mix, a cross-section of committee members, as you're going to see. Classroom teachers from elementary school, the MEA president, Bedford Education Association president, Pete Johnson is listed there. There is another executive board member, Kelly Cochran, on the MEA is on that committee as well. We have a physical education teacher, mathematics, a kindergarten teacher. So I think we're well represented with teachers. Our school counselors are very important because we're all talking about reading, writing, and arithmetic, but there is a social emotional component that is just as important that we're going to have to deal with in September when our students return. I cannot tell you how many conversations I've had with parents in regards to this issue. I don't need to even explain why the school nurses are here. And they're representing all of our other nurses, and they're critical to contact tracing as well. And they're critical to the insight that we're getting into other areas like screening, temperature checks, and so forth. So Sean, you can go ahead and move to the next screen. Parents. Again, another cross-section of parents. There's parents from the elementary school, parents that are represented at middle school, parents who work in the district, parents who are community members and own a business, and then parents who represent the great organization of HSA as well. We thought it was important to add a business owner who's been dealing with the issues that we've been dealing with as well here in the district and has a different perspective. So we added a business owner and a gentleman who probably needs very little introduction, that would be Mr. Murphy, our network engineer, Mr. Sean Gray, who's with us this evening, our maintenance operations supervisor, John Gallagher, and of course cafeteria because we have the responsibility of providing meals even though we're at half session in terms of the recommendation that we're making. Sean, you can go to the next slide. School administrators are represented at middle school and elementary school. Board members, our president sits on every committee ex officia, but he insisted on being on this committee as he wants to keep his fingers on the pulse of what's going on here. Cindy Wasserberg represents the board as well. We have central office administrators representing technology, special services, and special need students. Of course, everything has to do with money, so Marie Goodwin has to serve, and transportation is a vital part of the plan as well. Sean, you can go on. So I mentioned to you right from the very beginning, we weren't one of the only two districts in the Lenape region to look at initially what our goal was from the onset. And that is full day, every day in-person instruction for all students and staff. And this plan that we proposed to the board this evening is a phase-in plan. It's a plan that we hoped over a period of time that can be phased in to get all of our students back into live instruction on a daily basis. You can go to the next slide, Sean. However, all throughout, everything that we're doing, there's two competing priorities. And those priorities are staff and student health and safety, and instructional integrity and continuity of instruction. And you have to ask yourself, can they both be on an equal footing at the same time? It's almost impossible. And all the committees that I've worked with, and all the parents that I've spoke to, all the staff that I speak to, our Board of Education, you know what, it's a balancing act. And the instructional program is extremely important, yes, but nothing is more important than the student health and staff health and safety. And that is our district's top priority. Sean, you can move to the next slide because I believe that that's what it talks about. Yes, with the caveat, we need students in school for in-person instruction. That has to be the driver. We cannot have students back into the building unless the social distancing and all the other guidelines that were given are put into place to ensure the health and safety of students and staff. It's a given. So at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Lockevera, who really provides the leadership for our instructional program, and he's going to talk about the three... He's going to talk about essentially the options for student learning and give you a rationale as to why, because I know several people are asking, "Why are you doing this? Why are you doing that?" So we want to provide you with that rationale. Mr. Lockevera?
Thanks, Dr. Del Rossi. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Rich Lockevera, and I am the director of curriculum for Bedford Township Public Schools. So based on everything that we know right now, there will be three options for learning that we're offering for the start of this coming school year. As you can see from the slide, the first one is a 100% remote learning whereby the students would stay home and learn completely through the use of their computer or Chromebook and online platforms. The second option is a hybrid learning option whereby the students would experience a combination of in-person learning at school with their teachers and remote learning at home. And then the third option, assuming a parent is not comfortable with either of the first two options, is the option to homeschool their child or to withdraw their child from Bedford Township schools and utilize another entity to educate his or her child. Sean, next slide, please. So let's talk a little bit about the 100% virtual learning option. So the following parameters and conditions would apply to this option. All of the core academic subjects would be delivered via live instruction using Google Meet more frequently than during last year's closure. This might be done through the entire class and/or in small groups. And some instruction will also be delivered through pre-recorded lessons. But in surveys that our parents completed, there was an overwhelming desire for more live instruction and more small group instruction or a question and answer session for students. So that is definitely something we're building into our plans. Now, due to more live instruction than they received during last year's closure, students will also be required to follow a more stringent schedule than last year's closure. Our goal here is to improve the quality of instruction, establish routines, and raise accountability for students. More specific details will follow as we're still working on this plan with our principals and teachers. Depending on the number of students requesting this option, it is possible that a student may not be assigned to a teacher from his or her school. We simply won't know that until the next survey goes out, and as Dr. Del Rossi mentioned, we're hoping to send that out tomorrow. And we have a handle on the number of students in each school that are requesting this option. There will be a higher level of accountability for attendance in this model than during last year's closure. Things like daily check-ins and/or submitting of assignments will be required to mark a student as present for the day. Again, we're still developing the structure and the details to determine what constitutes being present. But one thing to state is made clear is that we are expected to take attendance regardless of the option that a child participates in. Likewise, grading in this model will also have a higher level expectation than during last year's closure. And we're going to try to grade the students as they would be in traditional school as much as possible. That's going to be a heavy lift, not impossible, but it's likely to be a little different than what you would experience if the child was in school every day. Again, we're still working on the details to that part of our plan. Student lunch will be available for pickup at Memorial Middle School for any family that orders one. We'll be sending out details on how to order that and what the procedures are to pick up the lunch. And students in the remote learning option will receive a district-owned Chromebook to use at home for as long as that option is in place. So you will not have to provide your own device. The district is providing each child that selects this option with a district-owned Chromebook. And lastly, for this option, there are no after-school activities or sports for any students regardless of the option you select until further notice. And that's at least until January 1st, 2021, when we have a good handle on what the current environment is. Sean, you can go to the next slide. So really, not that this is the only advantage, but the big advantage of the 100% remote learning option is that there's a lower health risk to students. Obviously, if they're not in school, the risk of becoming ill is lower. Next slide, Sean. Now I'd like to tell you a little bit about the hybrid learning option. In this hybrid learning... Excuse me, in this hybrid learning option, students would alternate between in-person learning days in school and remote instruction from home. We're going to be following a consistent A-B schedule as opposed to something I call a pure A-B schedule. And here's what I mean by that. A-days will consistently be Mondays and Thursdays. B-days will consistently be Tuesdays and Fridays. Wednesday will alternate between A and B every other week. Our goal there is to try to provide some level of consistency for parents in childcare situations. So for example, if you're in a cohort A, you'd be able to tell your childcare provider that you need care on Mondays and Thursdays every week and on Wednesdays every other week. Of course, each student will be assigned to either an A-day or a B-day schedule. And this is being done so that no more than 50% of the student body will be in the school building on any given day. That will enable responsible social distancing to take place in the school as well as on the school bus. Every effort will be made to place children from the same household on the same day's schedule. And please note, there is no difference between the A group and the B group. We're using an A and a B label because it's very easy to remember A versus B as opposed to naming it the red group and the blue group, or the eagles and the hawks, or things like that. The A-group, B-group split is generally going to be done by last name alphabetically. However, there will be exceptions to that because in some schools, if you divide the student body in half, it might be everybody that's A through L. In another school, it might be everybody that's A through N. So that will depend on the specific school. And of course, once we get the information from the survey, we'll be able to notify those parents in the A cohort and of course those parents that children will be in the B cohort. In the hybrid option, we will follow an early dismissal schedule. And that is going to be posted within the communication that parents will receive tomorrow. It's the same early dismissal schedule that we followed for years. There's several reasons that we're following an early dismissal schedule. One is it will provide critical time for teachers to prepare high-quality asynchronous and synchronous lessons and virtual assignments. It will provide additional time for teachers to receive professional development on best practices for remote learning. It will also provide staff with time to reflect, review, and revise both their instruction as well as building safety procedures. An additional benefit of an early dismissal schedule is the ability for teachers to touch base and offer support to students on their non-attending day. And additionally, our assistants will be available for small groups or one-to-one virtual support in the afternoon. And finally, an early dismissal schedule eliminates large group gathering situations like lunch and recess. And I want you to note, for a hybrid learning option, on the remote learning days, there will be less live instruction compared to the 100% remote option. And that's mainly because teachers will be with their children in in-person instruction throughout the entire morning. There will be attendance requirements on remote learning days, and we are working on the details in terms of how students will check in and get credit for being present on those days. Box lunches will be available for pre-order the night before in-person school so that students can bring them home on the day that they're in school. And on remote learning days, lunches will be available for pickup at Memorial for any family that orders one. And again, we'll be sending details home regarding times for pickup and ordering procedures. And again, students will receive a district-owned Chromebook to use at home on remote learning days for as long as this option's in place. In the hybrid model, students will bring their Chromebook back and forth to school. However, we're going to ask them to leave the charger at home so that the device will be charged at home the night before and then brought to school with hopefully a full charge for learning. Sean, can you move to the next slide, please? So here are some of the advantages for the hybrid model. Of course, there's a higher overall quality of instruction simply because we're going to have access to the students in person two to three days every week. There is a higher level of accountability with the hybrid model. Students will be able to get in-person feedback from their teachers, especially with navigating remote learning in terms of how to use platforms. It's going to be easier to provide students with instruction and how to do that. Obviously, there'll be more social interactions in the hybrid model. However, they'll be limited because of social distancing protocols. And Sean, you can move to the next option or the next slide. And of course, the last option is the homeschooling option. If parents do decide that this is the best option for their child, we ask that they contact their child's school, and the school secretary or principal will walk them through the process if that option is selected. Sean, next slide, please. So we are asking parents, when they complete the survey that's going out very soon, to carefully consider their selection because we are... We're taking this as a commitment to that learning option. Obviously, it's critical that we get this information sooner rather than later. We don't have a lot of time to turn this around and notify parents that select the hybrid option in terms of what cohort they'll be in. And that commitment will be expected to be honored at least through the first marking period of the school year. So at the elementary level, the first marking period ends November 10th. And at the Haynes and Memorial Schools, the first quarter ends on November 16th. As you can imagine, changes that are requested prior to then can wreak havoc with things like scheduling and other matters. So, you know, we will ask parents to commit to that option for at least the first quarter of the year. So again, our goal is to get that survey out to families tomorrow and for you to complete that as soon as you possibly can so we can begin the work of dividing kids into cohorts, knowing how many students are selecting the 100% remote option and how many children are selecting the hybrid option. Dr. Day, I'll turn things back over to you right now.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Lockevera. That's fairly comprehensive, very good. Actually, it was comprehensive. So, board, there are four key subject areas in the plan. Conditions for learning, leadership and planning, policy and funding, and continuity of learning. And for the public, the Board of Education will get a completed detailed plan, which they're going to have to approve, which will be a public document. Again, will be listed, like our closure document, will be listed on our website and will be approved via the Department of Education through the county superintendent. So we have to submit to the county superintendent, in turn, he'll send it to the department, and hopefully our plan will be approved. So the continuity of learning is threaded all throughout the plan. And of course, policy and funding, we have to have policies which reflect what we're doing. And Ms. Goodwin will be taking care of the funding section because there are grants that we've applied for for technology and so forth. And of course, there's increased costs in terms of getting ready to make this shift. And leadership and planning, again, is threaded throughout the plan. This evening, for the board and the public, I would like to focus on one of the areas, which is the conditions for learning. It includes 10 critical areas of operation that I know I am most sure that you're going to have some questions about. So Sean, can you go to the next slide, please? So here's the first five. And I'm not going to read them to you because I'm going to review briefly each one of these areas and highlight some of the guidelines that are provided within and give you some answers and recommendations guidelines. So Sean, you can go to the next slide so they can see the next 10. And these critical areas of operations, I know you're going to have questions about, and that's why I want to cover them and give you some information about them this evening. So Sean, let's go to the first. General health and safety guidelines. Of course, again, I'm not going to read them to you, I'm going to skim over and just make some comments. Of course, we've been in contact since our school closure with the Burlington County Health Department. We have to make our decisions relatively utilizing their guidelines. Also, part of this particular area talks about opportunities that we have to provide for high-risk staff members who will need to either take a leave or work through telework. Of course, virtual opportunities for all students, Mr. Lockevera covered that. There are several behaviors which hopefully will reduce the spread of COVID. like, you know, encouraging students and staff to stay home when appropriate. Hands and hygiene, respiratory etiquette, face coverings, which we'll talk about, and reinforcing these behaviors through signs and messages throughout our buildings. Of course, we've got to make reasonable accommodations for high-risk staff and students. And we're in constant contact with our staff about this, and our human resources department is working with our staff to hopefully be able to make the accommodations of those people who need them so that they can return to in-person action. You go on to the second one. Classroom testing, classrooms testing and therapy room. Of course, the social distancing, we're all familiar with this at this time. We're striving to remain at that six feet apart and better in some cases, depending on where we're going to be with the number of parents that select remote instruction for their students. It could be even much better than six feet apart. For those circumstances like guided reading, when we most probably can't be six feet apart, we're probably going to use physical barriers, where that's going to be a challenge. Face coverings will be required for all students, staff, and visitors. And the circumstances will be, we realize that there's some staff and students that medically may not be able to wear a face covering. So we'll have to make some accommodations for those students. We're going to limit the use of shared materials. Mr. Lacavera already talked about the one-to-one that we're going to do from K to eight. Ventilation is an important issue, and we are required by state law. There's guidelines, and I know our director of operations is with us and can answer any questions. But when we can increase above the normal rates of ventilation, we will do that. However, you've got to realize you have to temper air that you bring in from the outside, so you've got to cool it or heat it. So we don't want our staff and students either freezing or being too hot either. All of our, all of our areas that students and staff will be in will have alcohol-based hand sanitizers as well as wipes for hard surfaces. We'll reinforce the handwashing protocols, and we're making amends above and beyond just having lavatories available for that as well. And then the key is going to be education and reinforcement of identification of symptoms and preventative measures for not only our students and staff, but for our parents as well. The game is going to change in terms of having students in school who are, who do not feel well. And we'll talk about that in a bit, in a bit. Sean, you can go on to the next slide. Transportation. Again, we're striving for the social distancing between students at six feet on our school buses. Our bus capacity will probably be 50% or less. And I want to thank those parents in our first survey that we sent out. I had over 1,000 parents that volunteered to say that either fully or partially, they would volunteer to take their child to and from school. Now, of course, that can cause another issue in terms of traffic patterns that we're working with the Metford Township Police and our principals with. Yet I want to thank those parents for assisting us with that because that will surely ensure that we will have that six-foot social distancing on our buses. Face coverings will be worn, will must be worn by all students and the driver on our buses. And of course, we'll be cleaning and disinfecting each of our buses between each run, and we have special equipment to be able to assist us with that job as well. Sean, you can go to the next slide. Student flow entry, exit, and common areas. Our principals are working diligently, as I had pointed out earlier, in terms of creating signage to direct our students and staff for travel within the facilities, to cut down people passing each other, to keep that social distancing. They're going to designate entrances and exits. And I want to point out, you know, there's a danger in Mr. Lacavera and I speaking for our principals because each one of our buildings, you know, or making decisions for principals at the building level, because we're not there. They have to implement these programs. And each one of their buildings is unique. I want you to think about the Allen School versus a school like Cherville. There's a distinct difference. Tawn Forge is much different than most of our other elementary schools because of the PID concept. Cherville and Kirby's truly different. The sixth-grade center, which was transformed into a, into essentially a middle school, a hybrid middle school, is, has its own challenges. So each one of our buildings has unique protocols which are being developed by our principals and are working diligently on them as well. Sean, you can move to the next slide. Screening PPE, response to students and staff presenting symptoms. A visual screening of students for symptoms upon arrival is going to be absolutely critical, and this is where we're going to ask our parents to be our partners. They're going to know because we're going to send home what the benchmark is, what those symptoms are. And no one knows better than a parent who looks at their child and says, you know what? You look flushed today. Let me feel your head. You may have a fever today. I need to take your temperature. And we're hoping that parents are going to do that at home. We're not asking parents to take a child's temperature every single day. Let parents know their children best of all. Our teachers know our children as well. So they're going to be looking for symptoms of students. You know, and I'm not talking about, you know, just one symptom in isolation. Are we going to be concerned about that? Maybe yes. But our teachers know right well when a student doesn't feel well and gets their eyes on them and say, you know what? Maybe it's best if you go down to the nurse. And I'm going to get you down there. I'm going to have such-and-such either take you down or walk you down, or depending on the age of the child, they may need to get to the nurse. We're contemplating taking temperature checks of our students. We have handhelds that we can use as students get off the bus. However, again, that may be too late. There's technology also that we've considered that would cost us north of about $50,000. It has challenges that we, that we heard about today from some of my colleagues in terms of where they have to be located in the school buildings. And ambient temperature from outside has an issue with them. So we're not sure if we're going to do the temperature checks as of yet. It's something we're going to talk to our administrators about. Depending on the number of students that we get coming off our buses and being delivered to the school, to the schoolroom door by our parents, we may be moving in that, in that direction. There has to be separate rooms for students who are symptomatic and staff who shows they're symptomatic of the symptoms relevant to COVID, which we have created in each one of our buildings. It cannot be the nurse's office. It has to be a separate room. And primarily, those rooms are for students, not staff, because they can leave the building maybe, but students who may have to wait for a parent to pick them up because they're either showing a fever or they don't feel well. And it may not be COVID-related. We have to have appropriate PPE, personal protective equipment that's accessible for use for not only our staff, but our students. As you know, all staff are required, they must, wear a face covering. So for those staff members that don't have them, we'll provide them for them. However, a school nurse in a situation that she may suspect that a student has COVID-relevant symptoms, may need gloves, may need a face shield, may need a gown that they need to use. So all that equipment that's necessary will be available and will be accessible for our staff as well as students. Any student who comes to school without a face covering, we'll be able to provide it for them, for sure. There will be, there are protocols for response to students and staff testing positive for COVID-19. Now, I know that's going to be a question, for sure, and that parents are concerned about this, as staff members are concerned about this. I invite you to go to the frequently asked questions section of our COVID-19 link on the website, and we spell out specifically what those steps are and how that needs to be handled. Now, we are waiting for forms and procedures from the Burlington County Health Department. And we were supposed to get them this week. They have not, or last week, actually, and we have not received them as of yet. But that will add to those procedures as well. But we know that was going to be an issue, so we spelled out specifically what those steps are, and we'll work with them. They may be subject to change depending on working with our small groups, as I told you in our district reopening committee. Our nurses have a great deal of input into those procedures, and we may need to change them to a degree. But I think that sheds some light on, does the entire school have to close? Does a classroom have to shut down? What about students? What about their siblings? How long do you have to do this? Do you have to get a COVID test and so forth? So many of those questions are answered specifically in those procedures. Sean, you can move to the next slide. Contact tracing is an integral part of that particular procedure that I'm referring to. Immediately when we are notified of a positive case, we have to confirm it with the Burlington County Health Department, usually either a testing site or a doctor's office will have to report that. They have to report that to the Burlington County Health Department. We have various logs, attendance records, schedules, person-to-person contacts that are, that will have to be reviewed by our school nurse who will facilitate this process. They're, again, will be mandated via the Burlington County Health Department, but we've already created that trail, for lack of a better word. That trail, that wreck, that paper trail that we'll be able to, will know where students and staff have been on a period-to-period basis. And that includes our lavatories as well. There has to be a notification to impacted families based on the results of the contact tracing, and that's important. In regards to number three, that paper trail that I'm talking about. Impacted rooms will have to be closed off for a period of 48 hours for disinfecting. Quarantine protocols will be employed based on that, on the contact tracing findings, and that will be different under each circumstance. And when you read those, those procedures, you'll see what I'm talking about. Positive case individuals produce appropriate documentation to return to school, and that's also included and elaborated on in those procedures as well. Sean, you can move to the next. Facilities cleaning practices. Of course, there has to be a manual that has to be approved by the Burlington County Health Department, the Department of Education, which we have established for cleaning and disinfecting schedules, methods, and approved materials, which kills COVID on hard surfaces in 60 seconds. And we have some, we have those materials. Our director of operations can speak to those issues. Identification of critical areas and surfaces to be cleaned throughout the day. Those high-touch areas, surfaces in students' classrooms, lavatories, doorknobs, you know, door surfaces, any tables. All those places are critical areas, and because our custodians will not be tied up, and we may need to add additional staff, I'm not sure. We have to evaluate this. But because of our custodians will not be tied up in our cafeteries, which takes up a great deal of their day, they'll be able to deal with those issues of cleaning surfaces throughout the, and areas throughout the course of the day, which they would not be able to do under normal circumstances. And of course, EPA-approved wipes for hard surfaces and hands will be located in each one of the areas of the building as well as each classroom. And we're encouraging students and staff to be able to use them on an as-needed basis. Sean, you can go to the next slide. Mr. Lacavera touched upon this. Lunches will not be served in the cafeteries or classrooms. You may say, you know, I know some districts are serving lunches in classrooms. My concern as a superintendent is that we have students, many students, that have allergies, food allergies, and that presents a problem. In addition to that, it breeds mold and mildew. And that's an issue that I'm very concerned about. Also, as Mr. Lacavera talked about, having no lunches in the cafeteria will limit the social gatherings. And we know, as hard as it will be to keep students apart in our cafeterias when we return, and we may return with social distancing issues, I don't know. We might have to tear those cafeterias when everybody's back. It's very difficult to keep students apart, especially at the middle school level. And I speak with lots of experience with that. There will be an online pre-ordering payment process, as there has been in the past. On the in-person days, students will take home home box lunches, which they will not be allowed to eat on the bus, for sure. And we'll have to deal with those issues as they present themselves. Remember, we have video on our buses, and those students who don't comply, who need to ride the bus, maybe they won't be allowed to ride the bus. Remote learning, parents would pick up boxed lunches at Memorial School. So on the remote learning days, if parents would like to have their student have a lunch from school, we will provide them with that there as well. We're working, Ms. Goodwin is working with Nutriserve to provide a number of different options, different than during the closure, that's healthy with a number of different choices, with a number of different choices. And we feel confident Nutriserve will be able to come up with a healthy choice that is students that, well, students will enjoy. Sean, you can go on to the next slide. Recess and physical education. One of the reasons we, and Mr. Lacavera, I think, mentioned this, that we did not, that we went to the half-day session is that, again, limiting the social gatherings. And the lunch recess eliminates that particular option for students to take advantage of. Of course, we can't expect students to sit in their seat all day long, so student movement breaks will be built into the daily schedule, whether they be five minutes, 10 minutes, whatever the case may be. Our physical education classes will be held outside whenever possible, if weather permits. And PE lessons and activities will be modified to accommodate social distancing and to reduce the use of shared equipment. Again, washing of hands protocol and sanitizing before and after class will be extremely important. And middle school students will not be changing in our locker rooms. Our locker rooms will be closed off, and students will be encouraged to wear comfortable clothes to participate in various activities that are created by our, our physical education teachers, which I have to tell you, I, if you speak to anyone on the committee, the presentation that was given by one of our physical education teachers in terms of the types of activities that students can participate in, we were just wowed, believe me when I tell you. So I think that we're going to do a much more efficient and a better variety of those opportunities for physical education. Sean, you can go to the next slide. Field trips, extracurriculars, and use of outside, use of our facilities by outside groups. As Mr. Lacavera spoke about, all field trips will be canceled at least until January 1st unless we get other direction by the Department of Education or the Health Department. All of our extracurricular activities in the next class, it's going to be canceled at least until January 1st, unless otherwise, again, notified by various departments. And then there will be no use of our facilities outside of school hours until at least January 1st, that we can evaluate this. As you know, our school buildings are used almost seven days a week into, you know, as early as quarter to seven in the morning to 10 o'clock at night by various, not only our students, but by various outside groups. I know this is going to be a hardship, but it's going to be hard enough to get our teachers out of the building to be able to do the job that we need to do to clean and sanitize. And we don't use the word deep clean here in Metford because our cleaning, we're deep- because our cleaning, we're deep cleaning every single day. But we need to disinfect and sanitize those areas. So our custodians need that time from the time our buildings are closed to staff and students to the time they arrive the next morning. But that will be a challenge as it is. And the half-day session will assist us with that in the sense that teachers will be able to leave the building earlier due to the fact that they're under contracted time from the time they eat lunch, their lunchtime is over to the end of their day to prepare for the following day. Join, you can go to the next question, next slide. So Board of Education members, before Dr. Etter opens this up, and I, I did see a number of items in the chat that I want to be honest with, I did not focus on because I'm thinking about what I'm presenting to you. I open it up for the board to ask any questions at this time. I realize you've received a lot of information prior, and we had some discussion in small groups amongst some of these issues. But please feel free to ask us any questions at this time.
Nobody on the board has any questions?
None of the board members have a question of the plan?
No. So Dr. Etter, you're free to open it up to receive comments from the community.
I'd like to go first. John Kornick?
Excuse me, I have to open this. And I will call based on the chat. I want to remind everybody in the chat who thought a lot of this was a waste of time that the purpose of this board meeting was for the administration to explain to the entire board the plans that we have to this date and what we're, what we're doing moving forward. We're going to conduct this just like a regular board meeting. This is not going to be a free-for-all, or it's going to be over. During this time of public comment, the following rules shall apply for everyone participating in the public comment time. Clearly state your full name, address, and municipality and/or group affiliation. Statements made by a participant shall be limited to five minutes duration. If you can do it unless, we'd appreciate it, because if a lot of people want to speak, we can keep this moving. Statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. In response to comments or questions, the board may respond or ask superintendent or business administrator or other administrators to do so. Or we may also opt to take the matter up for a future meeting so that the matter is researched by district and administration. The presiding officer may interrupt, warrant, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. The section of this meeting during which participation of the public is allowed shall be limited to thirty minutes unless prior permission has been granted. I realize that's our, thirty minutes is our standard. I realize we may be going longer than this. But we're going to stick to the five-minute time limit. If you can say it unless, fine. If all you're doing is repeating somebody else, I would ask that you not take up the time to just repeat what has already been stated so that we can get to everybody's concerns and questions. Sean, do you have a list?
I do not have a list, but I did read in the chat that, that John Kornick wanted to go first.
All right. Then, John, I'm going to open it for you. Remember, we need your name, address, and municipality.
Good evening, board and Dr. Del Rossi. And Dr. Etter, I apologize, that was out of character of me. But my address is Free Mander Lane, Medford. I'm a father of three daughters that are in the school district. First of all, I, I look at this presentation and I find lack of, of out-of-the-box discussion as I had asked on the June twenty-second meeting. We did have opportunity to meet with Dr. Del Rossi and, and Dr., Mr. Lacavera. And I, sitting in that meeting, felt some confidence that they were going to start looking at this in a different direction. But, but after seeing this presentation, I feel that we've kind of backtracked. And we're not being aggressive, and we're not being in the forefront as the, as I would expect being in this district. We completely understand moving of this goalpost by, by the Governor's Office and State Department of Education. But I, I find that this plan is, it lacks any idea. We had a difficult poll issued out two Fridays ago. That in itself created, I guess, problems, questions, and concerns of what this board is doing, or at least what our administrative staff is doing. And I, again, feel like we're moving backwards. So I'm going to go through a couple of points that I have written down. And I, I need some confirmation or affirmation from Dr. Del Rossi as to what direction we're going to go. I need confirmation that masks of our students aren't going to be required to be worn as they are sitting at their desk following the social distancing guidelines. Reading the, I guess it's called Back to, Back to Education or whatever the document, the road back, it says that we have to have a six-foot radius around our kids. And then that in itself would permit instruction without face masks. So are, are we going to follow that guideline and are face masks going to be required?
Mr. Kornick, I think in the best interest of our staff and students, I think that we, we've agreed that we're going to require them. Now, not to say that, for instance, if I'm a teacher at an elementary school like Taunton Forge, and I want my students to take a break, and I take them outside, and they are well within distances, and the teacher has an activity or they're walking, and the teacher allows them to take their mask off at that time, that would be one thing. But inside the building, I think, you know, CDC recommends, Burlington County Health Department recommends, you know, face masks are going to inhibit the, the transmission of COVID. And the number one priority is for students and staff's safety. So this is going to assist us? Yes, that's going to be required.
So sitting at a desk, Dr. D, all the students, they're going to have to wear a mask in class during instruction?
That's yes.
That is not what you stated when we sat last Monday, but let's move on. This is why we wanted to ask these questions.
Yeah.
I feel like we're, we're speaking out of both sides of the mountain, and that's Scotty concern. Confirmation that the district has looked at a variety of options for desk barriers and separators to bring this density up in the school setting and/or be a different position and, and do a different look at whether masks are going to be required as they sit there during student instruction. We sat in a two-hour meeting with you and, and Mr. Lacavera. And we all acknowledged the amount of fidgeting that we did with the masks. And now that you're going to say that your kids are going to have to wear masks sitting in class, so have barriers been looked at?
Yes. Our Director of Operations and Director of Special Services consulted with our principals in regards to those areas in which they felt that the barriers were going to be, were going to be necessitated. And in fact, those barriers have been ordered and will be in class. For instance, I referenced that in the guided reading group. You know, I think that, you know, were special needs for students who are taking maybe speech, where that mask is not going to be appropriate for that student to have that on.
That's a different setting though, Dr. Del Rossi. At my understanding, if you have somebody moving out to the MTTS test or whatever that acronym is, they're, they're in smaller groups. I'm focusing on bringing the kids back to school five days a week, and that's my, my, my foundation here. So let's, let's just move on. I, I've got five minutes, so I need to get all the questions out. So with that stated...
Mr. Kornick, I am writing these questions down.
I know you are, and I sent them to you already, so let's, let's just move on.
Thank you.
We, we talk about the level of education that we expect, that you expect. And, and now that you're going to throw this A-B discussion out there, and this is really going to be your directive, or we're going to have four at home, and then you give this third option of pull your kids out of the public system. I, again, find that this, this just has a lack of, of any idea. I'm thinking outside of the box for the benefit of our community. So this standard that you have, you have a binder. This binder has where every student in every grade needs to be and where they have to be at every level at every moment of, of the year. How are you going to monitor that? How are you going to ensure that my fourth grader, my first grader, my sixth grader are on target every, every part of the curriculum when you're, you don't have a good curriculum set up? The instruction, the instruction lacks, in my opinion, any forethought on how you can open this school up. And I'm, I'm somewhat embarrassed of the board not having any questions of this presentation. And I, I don't understand that. That, that in my mind blows my mind out. So where, where are you going, how are you going to get us to the level of education that I expect of my, my children in this school, in this program that you're presenting?
Yeah. Mr. Lacavera, do you want to answer that question? Because you and I have discussed that today, and I, I know that there's something you want to elaborate on.
Can we, can we leave that till after I do all my questions? And that way you can write them all down, and then you can answer them, so I get my five minutes.
I'm stopping the clock when they're talking because that's not part of your time.
Appreciate that, Dr. Etter.
I also want to inform you that I've heard this presentation, and I've been through it in, in meetings.
Okay.
So that's why I don't have any questions.
But with all...
I'm also getting very close because if you listen to my directives in the beginning, try not to make it personal and try and not direct nasty comments at people.
I, I haven't done that yet.
Yeah, well, you're very close. You have more questions? Go ahead.
Can I interrupt you for a second? I, I also want to kind of comment on the questions thing. I, everyone can attest to having a whole list of questions that I emailed to Dr. Del Rossi instead of taking up time here so that the public had enough time to speak. So I, I do have a ton of questions. But I feel as though they're better addressed at a time where I'm not taking away from the community.
That's fair, but...
I, I agree with that. I just want to say the same exact thing, that we discuss all of that to not take away from the time that everybody here has.
Great. Correct, that's what we hear.
So moving on to the, the level of education. Mr. Lacavera, I, I am extremely concerned with the A-B discussion. We had discussed that in our sit-down meeting. I, I find that if we have this poll that comes out before us that, that asks the parents, the community, whether they want to have their kids in school full-time or at-home instruction, we haven't even gotten to that level. If you find that you have a fifty percent participation that want to be in school and fifty percent at home, or even a number at sixty or seventy percent that want to be in school, it feels to me that you have put your program installed, it's set. And this is the way you're going to go without this poll. So the poll I'm concerned is going to be overlooked. And if the numbers show that you can have all these students in the school, then we're not going to be afforded that, that potential.
Mr. Kornick, we talked about that in our meeting. And depending on what the data shows us, we'll make a recommendation to the board, look at that data, and look how that can be possibly phased in. That could possibly be an option, there's no doubt. But I don't know what that date is, but I'm going to have it probably by the end of the week, for sure. But we're not closing the door on that. And that's why some of the very small districts in the Lenape region have been able to go to full-day, full-time instruction because of the number of the students that are in that district as well in the classroom. Now, I have that data, and I know what that circumstance is. And, and any classroom that has six or seven students in it could surely go. If that's the average in the building, can surely go full-time. And if we get to a point where we, the board feels that that's a possibility, we can phase that in.
You're, you're moving to one of my points and questions, Dr. Del Rossi. When you start to look at the capacities of buildings, and you look at the DOE document that says one hundred thirteen square feet per student. You know, we, we did the math quickly sitting in that, in that room. If you looked at an eight-hundred-square-foot room, and we were able to get roughly seven kids with, with separation appropriate. Has this district looked at their professionals and/or sought a professional, go out and look at every building to see what the capacity of the, this school is?
Mr. Kornick, I don't need a professional to do that for me. My Director of Operations has did that, has done that calculation, that's number one. Number two, we've set models up in each one of our classrooms to see because we know what the benchmark is. It's six feet. That's optimal. So setting up those classrooms and knowing what it looks like when everybody's back in and what it looks like at fifty percent capacity or less, we need to do it. And that's the measuring stick that we're using.
So were you able to share what the, the density can be in, in the school?
We'll get back to you when...
Okay, thank you. So I guess I look at this program that's been developed as well with the A-B. You're looking at online teaching and then at-home instruction. And I'm concerned that this district hasn't evaluated the IT capabilities that are afforded to us, not only through current programs that are available, but also looking at a pool, you know, through the districts and the area. When you start to talk to other districts or other teachers in the, in other districts, their programs seem to be a lot more aggressive than ours. And again, with all due respect, Dr. Etter, I'm concerned that we're not in the forefront. I'm not trying to be aggressive to anybody, but as I stated back in, on the twenty-second, we have the capability, the capacity, the minds to come in and be the most aggressive in Burlington County. And I find that this program that's been presented is subpar, and, and I'm concerned about that. And I feel that this district has the ability to bring our kids back five days a week. I'm fine with that being, that at least gives parents the opportunity that they have to get some school to plan. This A-B stuff is, is just not efficient. And I don't think it's efficient not only for parents, working parents, but it's not efficient for education.
Right. I got to stop you. Your time is up. Stan, you're up next.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Dr. Etter. Stan Sizik. I live at nine Westlake Road in Medford. My son goes to Cranberry Pines. I sent you and Dr. Del Rossi a rather long email. I tend to write long emails. The presentation tonight, if you want to say, did acknowledge a lot of the points that I put in my email. So my wife and I are in the situation where we're remote workers now, and our employers have no timetable to return us to the office. So my, you know, I was happy to have our, our son go to virtual option once I knew what that was, right? So I think the survey this week is, is going to be good because now I know what I'm choosing between, right? You know, my main points were live instruction to the extent possible, a structured schedule so that we can try to work, you know, and, and, and have him in the other room. We may get some of the other neighbor kids together too. You know, homework, tests, like school, you know, like real, real school with, with structure and assignments. And so if you tick those boxes and the hundred percent virtual option, then it's off. I, what I would suggest is when you put the survey out, you know, include that slide or all the slides and the link to this recording. Because for those that couldn't get in tonight and are in our situation, if there's enough of us that know what we're now getting in the fall, which is getting closer to, you know, being in school, that enough of us might opt for that, that it might take enough burden off the, off the actual building to, to some of the other parents' comments that you, you might be able to, you know, pull an audible and, and get, you know, more days of, of live instruction for those parents that don't have that. They have to, they have to be in the office or have to be out on the road or whatever, whatever it may be. So those were my key points in the email. I think you addressed them. Is that it's going to start to get closer to the structure of school as it was just a couple miles away at home. You know, to, you know, without the gym and without the lunch and without the... And I think the Chromebooks are, you know, a great idea. Somebody just, you know, my field, I come from a technical background. I know you'll be able to push new widgets and gadgets and apps and, you know, you know, make it so the students can, you know, have, all have a consistent behavior. We're not going to be dealing with tech issues hopefully that much. And so the one question I did have was, it's, it wasn't totally clear... the one question I did have was it's it wasn't totally clear to me in the presentation is it sounds like if we do elect the virtual option that our son may get assigned a teacher from another school, is that are you saying that teachers will be dedicated to the 100% teaching, the 100% virtual option versus the hybrid option? They'll be that'll be like, there'll be teachers in one camp or the other, so to speak?
Yes, Mr. Sizik, first and foremost, I want to thank you for your email. You had a lot of pertinent questions which were thoughtful. And we had to, again, we use some of your questions to do the F A Q. And to answer your question, depending on the number of teachers that for middle school and elementary, it may be a bit different. Depending on the number of teachers that may need a remote option that could not return, we might be able to cover the district in regards to elementary school with those teachers. I'm not sure. You know, we're working with those teachers to try to work through to make accommodations to try to get them back in to the building. That could be the case at middle school as well. We do have a couple of different options at at middle where we could maybe if we had enough students who took the virtual option, we might be able to designate an entire team and related arts teachers to be able to take that responsibility on. There's another option where we might be able to give additional time to teachers to be able to provide that instructions while we have something built into the contract. It's called a seventh teaching period, which should be paid to do that above and beyond their regular class schedule that they have. So until we get a definitive commitment from teachers in terms of if they're returning or not, you may notice that we put out a a call for a number of different teachers. We're advertising for a number of different teachers in many different areas just in case, you know, our teachers become ill and for one reason under the contact tracing can't return, we we need a cadre of teachers that we can turn to. And we're trying to be proactive in that sense to be able to hire to replace those teachers that are quality. We're not going to wait to the last minute. We're proactively addressing that issue. And I know that districts around us are concerned about that as well in terms of substitutes. So we'll do the best we can in terms of providing teachers in the grade level in which your child is in within the building. Is that a possibility? It's a possibility. Again, you know, even at elementary school, there may be a possibility that we reduce. For instance, if you have three teachers at a grade level and we have enough to create a section of a section of elementary school, we may, at a at a certain grade level, we may pull off a teacher and that teacher will teach that particular grade level. But there's an impact. That impact would be that then those students that were divided among three teachers will be divided divided among two. And that would increase the class size, which would then negotiate the social distancing, which we have to take a very hard look at.
Yeah, I I understand it a lot. I mean, it starts with the survey. But now, I mean, like I said, like, it starts with the survey and now I feel like we're not kind of choosing between what's behind door number one and what's behind door number two. Like I, you know, I I know what the difference is between being in the school with all the restrictions and 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 behaviors that that are necessary to come with that. And I, you know, if I choose the virtual option, I can accommodate the virtual option. I'm going to get some live instruction. I'm going to get some recorded instruction. We get homework. I'm going to get assignments. I'm going to get tests. I'm going to get like that. That, you know, that's what I was looking for. And and I think the other thing about the Chromebooks, I'll just say that, you know, for the students that are doing the hybrid, you know, instead of kind of chasing this reactively like a like a moving target, like I think the fact that the students in the school will have the Chromebooks too means that God forbid if there's an outbreak, like they can just pivot to go home. I mean, not, I mean, the the burden on the parents notwithstanding, right, in their jobs, I'm not like downplaying that. But like, you know, and then, you know, the pandemic gets better, we all hope. You know, you it's the same, you know, they're they're accustomed to the to the computer at that point. They're just where they're sitting is is what's what's changing. So anyway, I, you know, I appreciate that. I, you know, I I I know what option we'll be.
Yeah, and the models are elaborated on in much more detail in the letter that we'll be sending home to parents as well as the presentation and the recorded meeting.
I mean, we're dealing with this at I'll just stop in a second. I mean, we're dealing with this at our company too. You know, there's no playbook for this. None of us were alive 100 years ago when like this happened. So we're just, I I get it, like we're trying
Well, certainly as a playbook, I wish they'd share with me, believe me. Not been, it's been one of the most difficult challenges I've ever had in my career, and that's been a long time, but neither in there. Thank you, Mr. Sizik.
Thank you, Stan. Okay, next up, we have Barbara Wyland. Barbara, are you with us?
Yes, I'm I'm trying.
Okay, just checking.
Okay, can okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi, my name is Barbara Wyland. I'm at 25 Token Passage in Medford. I've been a longtime special education assistant in the district for 20 years. And I'm just curious what part the assistants are going to play in this hybrid or in school role.
Barbara, good question. Our assistants will be employed the same hours as they were as if we were in school, so there will be no reduction in those hours. Our assistants will be assisting teachers as as they have in the past. And when, as you well know, Barbara, there's going to be some time in your contract that you're going to be available to assist teachers and or work with possibly reinforcing skills remotely with more groups of students or individual students. So we're hoping to be able to utilize the expertise of our assistants. As you well know, many of our assistants have been with us for a number of years and and have developed a number of skills which are very valuable to students. So we're hoping to be able to utilize the assistants in the capacity that will assist students to the best of their ability as well as the teachers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Next up, we have Joe Rowan.
Good evening, everybody. I hope you can all hear me and thank you again for taking time over this. My name is Joe Rowan. I'm at 23 Sadler Drive in Medford. I have two two questions right off the top of my head. One of them is more technology related. As we ended the school year last year, I have a daughter who was finishing up in the second grade and a daughter who was finishing up in the fifth grade, both at Kirby's Mill. And one of the things that I noticed was a large amount of the technology, the websites, the the tools that were being used were flash based sites. And my concern right now is flash will no longer be supported on almost any major browser and is being discontinued by Adobe come December 2020. So does the school have a plan to address any of that? And have they have you guys reached out to any of these companies? I know many, many companies are way behind on their conversions because of this pandemic. But the deadlines haven't changed. This has been announced. It's been out since Ju- July of 2017. It's one of the longest end of life announcements for an application ever. So that was one of my main concerns. Is is there for these remote learning days, these times when these kids are at home? If some of these tools and technologies aren't going to go are going away or not going to be supported, is there a plan to adjust for that? Especially if this pandemic gets worse again and everybody has to go back to homeschool, right? So it's a concern. And the second question was, again, based on the
Let me get that question for you first.
Absolutely, sorry.
Um, Mr. Doctor Gray and Rich, I know you've had discussions with our technology coordinator in regards to this. And we've moved in a direction to ensure that that's not going to be an issue. Can you elaborate on that? For Mr. Rowan?
Sure thing, Doctor Del Rossi. So our primary program that that's flash based, I know it's pivotal for kids, is, I believe it was Envision Math. And we are, we've actually purchased the upgrade for that one, so that's no longer a concern. A lot of the other tools are more site specific, meaning vendor specific. And I'd imagine that, given that deadline, you're right, it's been a few years now that the vendors are are taking appropriate actions to make sure that the sites are compatible. But our core, you know, in terms of curricular based products and software, they the the ones that we have are are pretty much upgraded and and ready for the flash phase out.
Like Sean, specifically the Google Suite, like the live broadcasts, weren't they going to be limited? Yet we had to purchase a a an additional license to be able to actually we did, we went to Screencastify if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
Yeah, it was Screencastify to in order to save the video because Google replaced that feature. Well, we got rid of it in the free version. So Screencastify is going to satisfy that particular need. But in terms of flash, we're all good to go with Google and Flash. Again, it was just really that one application. And I know from having to work around it the past few years with using Edge and such to get over the flash issue. But again, that's that's been rectified this summer.
Okay, yeah, again, my concern came in because a lot of the sites, and I'm sure a lot of the parents that are on here can can attest to, you know, you're on the Chromebook and you kind of go to a website and you got the little thing, allow flash, allow flash. It just seemed like every site that my child was directed to go to had that pop up. So it was a concern. Along the same technology lines, my other concern is especially towards some of the lower grades. What what provisions are being being put in place to address some of the technology gaps for the educators? For the actual teachers themselves? Because that was a a problem that we encountered in the spring. There was, you know, some of the lower grades where they don't deal with the Chromebooks on a regular basis. There was definitely a gap in the technology understanding on some of the teacher sides which posed some hardships for my child and even for my wife and I.
I will let Mr. Lockever weigh in on that. I know there've been some discussions about some professional development for staff to kind of get everybody on an equal playing field, so.
Yeah, I I can address that, Sean. So there are a couple of things to focus on that. We have our district technology coordinator and our technology coach working with our technology teachers this summer on training to provide teachers that would be in that category that you just described, Mr. Rowan. So they're they're working on professional development that will help raise their skill level. Additionally, we're we're looking at a revised school calendar that won't impact children or the start of the school year for kids, but it will give us an extra day to work with teachers and provide in person training and or webinars that teachers will have time to watch to improve their skills. And then, of course, one of the advantages of the early dismissal model is that training will be able to be provided to those teachers that need it in the afternoons. So we feel between that multi pronged approach, we'll be able to improve the the skill level with our teachers that are in need of that. And of course, our goal is for the experience that children and parents have to be improved over what they experienced during the closure last school year.
All right, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate that. I'm I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, next up, we have Karen.
Hi, I'm here. This is Karen Cussie. I'm at 24 Horseshoe Curve. I'm here in Medford, that would be else. Just a couple of questions. I'm curious as to what thought was given to support full time parents, full time working parents for before care, after care and online learning days? Because this is going to become a huge financial burden for some families out there.
Mrs. Cussie, let me try to answer that as best as I possibly can. As you well know, this is a difficult division in in terms of, especially with the half day, trying to balance that out. We are a meeting this week, our team is meeting this week with Y M C A Camp Buckinick. Well, it's Y M C A in the Pines, excuse me. And we're going to continue our before and after school care at each one of our elementary school buildings. So that will provide some assistance to parents. I know that the Y is working on a program. I can't speak for them. That may address an issue for parents in the on the off day. I I I would have to believe it would be fee based, number one. And I I can't speak for them. If I was putting a program like that together, I'd be concerned about the social distancing. Now, the camp has a camp, you know, so there's lots of space there. Yet I'm just, you know, the social gathering issue for me is an issue. I know that that's an issue that they have had to deal with over the summer in terms of their summer programming that they're delivering. So I I really can't speak for them. They've, you know, they're very cooperative with us. They're going to, they're going to meet our demands in terms of working with us in the A M P N program. But I I realize that this is a struggle. And, you know, we, there's no easy answer to this. And it's, you know, three days out of the week, depending on the rotation, parents will have their children in school. The other two days they will not. And on some weeks, it's going to be just the opposite. Realizing it's it's a burden. My job, you know, obviously I'm recognizing it. But my job is to really focus on providing students, and you hear parents speaking to us about their students being behind. How long is it going to take to catch them up? What are you going to do to catch them up? Our job is to really focus on that at this point. With the circumstances that the state has given us, do you really feel that this is the best programming that we can offer at this particular time? Yet realize that this is a burden for parents as well. I wish I had a better answer and I and I and I wish I could resolve that problem for you, but I can't. I just want to be upfront with you.
No, I appreciate that and I I really do. And that kind of leans into my second question. As far as, you know, the district spending contacts with the Y program. I currently have two kids who go to Camp Buckinick and over the summer. And I have to say, their program over the summer is run seamlessly. From things that you're saying as well, I do think that there is a lot that the district could learn from what the Y M C is doing as far as drop offs, pickups, temperature checks.
Yeah, I saw your I saw your chat on that. I was gonna I was gonna mention that to Doctor Del Rossi.
Yeah.
We're meaning anything we can learn from them, we will. I mean, there's no ifs, ands or buts about it. You know, we're meeting this week, so I'm glad that you mentioned that.
Yeah, thank you on that.
Yep. Question on specials. I know a lot of us are wondering what how specials are going to be handled, if at all, as far as, you know, art, music, gym class and whatnot, you know, with the key focus being, you know, I have elementary kids, so selfishly I will throw that out there, you know, writing, math and reading are the focus of my children, and at different levels have different, you know, core elements that they need to learn. So will specials still be included at some level or will they be online or will it be incorporated on on in class space?
Mr. Lockever, that's in your area. You can go ahead and answer. I know what you're going to say, but go ahead.
Sure. The the short answer to that question is yes. So we're bound to the New Jersey student learning standards and there are learning standards for health and P E, visual and fine arts and well, that visual and fine arts takes care of music and art. So we do have to address those standards. It will be a combination of in person instruction as well as remote instruction, unless, of course, you you select the high or the the 100% remote, then it'll all be remote. And, you know, we believe that not only are we bound to address those standards by the state of New Jersey, but I saw one of the the comments on the the chat. They do provide a benefit to students in terms of recreation, exploring talents that they may have. It's shown, all those areas are shown to improve performance in academic areas. So we do believe that it's it's part of a well rounded education. And and trust me, I'm just as, if not more concerned about the learning loss that our kids have experienced in reading, writing and math. So I know it would be tempting to say no music, no art and no P E. But that's something that we're not in a position to do because of what the state requirements are. And of course, we believe that there are benefits to children participating in those classes. So they will be continued to be offered through a combination of virtual and in person instruction.
Okay, understand. So I guess my next question is, was live streaming classrooms considered in any of the decision making process? I know in typical business practice, it's common now. You know, we conduct meetings and we live stream and Skype and everything else, real time, to kind of help offload the burden of, you know, teachers creating multiple curriculums.
I'd like to answer that for you, Karen. Mr. Cornick, in our meeting, mentioned that as well. And wanted to know what our capability was in regards to to that to that issue. I did some, you know, I had our Um, I did some, you know, I had our, uh, engineer take a look at what the cost would be to us outfitting our district with, uh, the infrastructure to be able to do that. And to our surprise, it wasn't as much money as we thought it was, would be. It was, um, our provider, uh, worked with us and it would be somewhere in the area of about fifty thousand dollars, maybe a little bit more than that. Uh, the cost comes in, if to do that program right, you really need, uh, cameras that, um, are on swivels that can move one hundred and eighty degrees. You also need a device, uh, with that as well. Um, so that cost to outfit, um, our classrooms for the fifty percent would be somewhere north of about two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars if we were to outfit our classrooms with that. And not to say that there would be some utilization of that in the future, and who knows where education's going. However, I'm here to tell you that what really counts in education is the relationship between the teacher and the student, um, that is in person, uh, and I think we all can agree with that. Um, we've considered, uh, I know some of the neighboring districts, and I know Mr. Cornick referred to this as well, and he referred to it as a lack of creativity. However, there's a number of different issues relative to this that has to be considered. Privacy is one of them. Um, the ability of a teacher to be able to respond to students, uh, students being identified. You got so caught up, God. Yeah, um, students being identified with special needs. And then teachers be able to attend, for instance, I can take a Chromebook or I can take a laptop and put it in the back of the classroom or place it somewhere in the classroom, and a teacher could be attending to some, the student that, um, may have a question on the Chromebook, yet there's students in the classroom as well that, at that time, may not be on task. So all those issues, it seems like a simple solution, but it's not as simple as you think. So did we consider this? Yes, we did. But we didn't think it was the best solution in terms of providing the highest quality programming that we possibly could in the time with the social distancing and the priorities that we had to juggle, um, to select a learning plan. So I hope that answers your question.
It does answer my question. Um, I don't want to take any more time in board, so I know a lot of people have questions.
You have some time. Um, when you comment, I only took time, your time, not the answers. So if you have something else, you have some time left.
Um, no, I'll reserve it. The rest can be emailed to you, and I think you can address them via that. I want to give folks other time, because I know there's a lot of other folks, so.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Ray Adamson.
Hi, this is Ray Adamson. Um, I'm excited to have you here. Um, I kind of quickly call out before I get into my question that I had to go over to my neighbor's house because of the cap of, uh, a hundred attendees on this call, and you guys know how, uh, engaged I've been throughout this entire process, so the fact that I've had been on work happy hours with two hundred and fifty attendees and we couldn't get over a hundred is just extremely concerning. So I'm just thankful that Ava was able to get on the meeting and allow me to, uh, to be here. It's great, so.
Um, this, Mr. Adamson, uh, we did not realize that until the meeting was underway and we were letting people in. We thought that Zoom had accommodated all that for school districts, and we thought we had like a thousand. So we, we will be discussing that with them, and we're sorry about that, but it was the biggest surprise to us as, as everybody. We thought we were going to have everybody in.
Yeah, all right, well, that's the task right now, so I guess we can continue to try and move forward. So Dr. D, I just want to, uh, address the meeting that we had, which was just one week ago, where, you know, a lot of the, a lot of people were skeptics about what you were putting out there, and on the heels of that meeting, I was extremely confident, not only in the governor, governor's executive order, but on the sincerity of the tone of your voice. And one of the things that I really, and a lot of people come to me and they come to the Corte's of the world and other folks on this call, and they ask questions, and they say, "How did it go? What did he say? What are some things that are out there that we didn't know?" And one of the things that I really took to heart is that you, you both, Rich and me, and you looked us in the eyes, and we said, "If the kids are going to be six feet apart, do they have to wear masks?" And, and you said steadfast, "No, because we're following the social distancing guidelines." And I'm not going to get hung up on the mask argument on this call. I just, I, I have a kindergartner, I have a third grader, I have a sixth grader. I'm less worried about my sixth grader, but I don't know how the hell we're going to get a, a kindergartner not to dig their fingers and touch their face all day, and that made so many people feel so much better that you were doing the right thing by not enforcing them to have them on during the day while they were just taking an instruction, and it, it's kind of, kind of leading to one of the questions that we had was, "Why are they leaving the classroom?" And, and I'll get to that in a minute, but I just want to give you an opportunity here to, to, to say what has changed in a week's time because you were steadfast that that was the case.
Well, re- revisiting and looking at, you know, talking to staff members, um, talking to parents, reducing, you know, taking every precaution to be able to reduce the, um, the, um, transmission of the possibility of COVID is, is where we're changed. Uh, and we were on a meeting with the Burlington County Health Department, and their recommendation, of course, is, under all circumstances, um, we would like to see you to encourage students to wear a mask. We know we're a face covering. Um, we know that it's required for, uh, for stu-, for staff. However, our recommendation also is, if at all possible, students should be wearing it because it's another safety proportion, and what's the priority here? That priority is, uh, the safety of students.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I completely understood, and I feel like we discussed that as well, but I mean, selfishly, I, I want to prioritize the health and wellbeing of, of my daughter. If she's touching her hands a hundred times, where she may be, touching her face a hundred times, where she may be have only touched it two or three times throughout a day, then that's going to happen with all these students as well.
Now, that's.
And if we're, but if we're actually, if we're, we talked about fevers early on before I, before I got, come out of the meeting. And talked about their parents knowing their kids the best, and, and a little protocol that are in place to, to, to get them out. If we're doing all those things, then, then why are we saying that that's, it's mandatory? Then we're not doing our job in the other areas.
Well, Mr. Adamson, let me ask you this question. Um, wearing of the face covering, does it reduce the risk of the possibility of a transmission of COVID? Yes or no?
I, not according to Dr. Fauci, of course.
Well, I, I, I guess that there is research on either side of that issue. My understanding that that is, is the case. That's not.
Well, you don't want to go there. Don't, don't, do me a favor, Joe, and don't go there with that.
Okay.
So I could go on all night with the real science, and you get into my area. Mr. Adamson, I hear you. But when we have directives from people who aren't using science, it gets to a point where we don't have much of a choice.
Well, I'm, yeah, I can only tell you what I'm hearing from the Health Department, and you can question them about that, and you're more than welcome to do that. Second, um, students, uh, respond differently in school than they do with their parents at home. Um, students take direction well, and I'm going to be the first to tell you, we're going to have challenges with this. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. We're going to have challenges with it, or we're going to have to make accommodations for those challenges. But, you know, if you have seventeen students, or eleven students, or ten students in a classroom, and you get eight students to comply and two not to, that you may have to make an accommodation for. My guess is, the, the odds are, the percentages are, you're better off. So.
Listen, I, 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 you said it to me last week. I don't know how much could have changed. I'm not going to get hung up on this. I'll move on to the other points. But I just want you to know that I put my name and my word out there based on your response, and now I look, you know, like what you told me was not actually true in seven days, so let's move on. Um, you said in, also in that meeting, why I was so excited on the heel, heels of that is that the missing piece was the governor's office saying that one hundred percent remote instruction was what we needed to send out a survey to say, "If you want to be one hundred percent remotely taught, then you have that option." And if you came back at thirty, forty, fifty percent of those people that could do that, that would be what we needed to get our kids, the ones who wanted to be in school, five days of instruction, even if they were only half-days, and the second half of that day could be the time that the teachers use to use, to build their lesson plans for the kids that want to work remotely. I understand that I'm glossing over and there's a lot more that goes to it, but again, uh, again, uh, these are the things that I conveyed to people on the heels of the meeting, and the level of excitement I had, I said, "I think we can do this." Now that it's going to be.
You conveyed that correctly, because maybe you missed that piece. Depending on the data that we get, we can evaluate that, and we can discuss that with the board and our administration, and there's a possibility that we can phase that in, yes. I don't know what that data is going to show. What if sixty percent of the people said that they wanted an online instruction?
And forty percent of the people were.
And it would, it would make it, would make it so very small that that, that could be a real possibility.
Wouldn't that be a bring-think for every person? Forty percent of the kids that are in class, they can be eight feet apart at that point. Sixty percent are at home, and even take them out of school a little bit less than that, and, I, I mean, I just.
Joe, Ms. Adamson, you did not mislead those people, because that's exactly what we'll take a look at. And I spoke to Mr., uh, uh, I said that in public in regards to Mr. Cornick's questions as well.
Sure, but, uh, I mean, what you just said, I was pretty.
We can't make that decision until we get the, the, the data from the survey.
Understood, and, and Dr. Etter, I got to tell you personally, and I, there's a lot of people that aren't in this position, I delayed even looking at private schools to send my kids to because I was so, I, I took exactly what was told to me, exactly what happened from the governor's office. We were now, we still want to have the survey out, and now that I, I'm hearing this, I, my, I was boiling per hearing that nothing changed, because now I can enroll them in St. Mary's, who did a great job in the fall, um, I'm sorry, in the spring with remote, virtual, online learning, and now, now they're completely filled up. So now that option's out for me, and for a lot of people that are trying to do it as well. So I, I understand you guys are doing your best, but we're trying to, yeah, do this in real-time as well and pivot, and now our options are dwindling, and we're, we're here looking at this going, hm, not much has changed. So, I, I, again, like, the, the longer it takes everybody else to get these surveys out, the lesser we have from an option aspect to try to pull five or so kids together, maybe get a teacher or a recent grad or somebody to implement a curriculum and, and teach the kids outside of two parents trying to do it on their own while they work.
And, Mr. Adamson, I, I, uh, I can appreciate your frustration. Um, you know, what I want all of our families to realize is that the plan that we talked about this evening is really a starting point. Um, there's a lot of uncharted water ahead, and getting the responses to the survey that's going out tomorrow is really, you know, my, my principals are, uh, chomping at the bit for that information, because that, that's the, the missing piece of info that they need to, to really dive into this deep. And I, I want to reiterate what Dr. Del Rossi said. There, there is a possibility, if enough families select the one hundred percent remote option, that we could do just what you're talking about. And we're, we're going to be asking for a very quick turnaround time because, um, we need that information sooner rather than later for reasons you mentioned as well as other reasons. So we're going to ask parents to have that back by Friday so we can process that ASAP. Um, but I, I don't want you to think that the door's closed on that, because as, as someone who's, you know, involved with the instructional program and the curricular program, you know, you and I want the same thing ultimately.
I believe that.
Just that I have to, you know, be, be conscious of the safety of the students. The other thing that I, I do want to apologize about the meeting, I, I don't want to just be here silent and not said anything, because you're absolutely right. And, um, I, I would say, one of the big things that, that's changed is the amount of feedback that we've gotten from, um, a, a lot of the adults that will be working in the building. I, I'm going to be honest, there's a lot of very, um, hesitant folks. They're, they're coming back to school with a, a high degree of trepidation, if not for their own health and safety, that of the families that they, they go home to each night that might be compromised. And, um, we also got some additional feedback from families, and we felt that, again, keeping in mind that it's a starting point, we would have to revert to, to the masks all the time, but principals will be meeting with their staffs regularly to discuss, "How's it going? How successful are you with the kids wearing the masks throughout the day? Is it, is it impossible to expect that from the kids?" And, you know, we may have to look at that and, and, and change directions, but as a starting point, when we spoke about it with health professionals, Dr. D and I spoke, we spoke with our nurses, um, you know, we felt that that would be the, the most responsible way to start. So I, I do feel badly, and I do apologize that, you know, what we told you was not what you heard tonight. So I apologize for that.
And, Mr. Adamson, this playing field changes every single day, and my guess is it's going, it's going to continue to change. And, um, I, again, I reiterate what Rich said. I apologize. You did walk away with that feeling on that first issue. I think you gave the right information out on the second issue. Yet, I want you to understand, we're trying to do the best for our staff and students, and we're not only getting information from you, uh, and, uh, your neighbors, but from our staff, from health professionals, and, um, from talking to parents, other parents as well. So I, I understand your concerns, yet I, I think you need to take a look at exactly what we're dealing with as well. There is no playbook for this.
All right, I understand. I do, and I, I.
It doesn't sound to me like you're that understanding, but that's.
Yes, I am. So it, it, that kind of leads me to this last point, and it was glossed over, and I'll just get on it quickly. So if I'm, if I'm understanding your position, then I would have to understand that if, if, if I choose the half-and-half option or close to it, that if my child and my children are going to be in class for twenty hours, that tots every two weeks, that part of that time is going to be gym, art, music, and other areas, not to core learning. I got to tell you guys, and the guys, everybody on, on the call, they're getting that on their own. They can get those things on their own. They can, I, I don't want them socially distancing, running through cones outside when they're having a hard time writing or doing math. I mean, we have got to be better than this. Um, it, it just, it doesn't make any sense. And why not use the gym and the cafeteria segmented out from a square footage aspect to get more classrooms in there? To get more heads, to get more bodies in classes. They're there to learn the core. Let us take them out back and kick a soccer ball and teach them jump rope and everything else that comes with that, and have them go play with their friends in the neighborhood where they can get social and be, um, active. They're playing sports already. They're on top of each other all the time.
Well, you get your point, your five-minute, and my timer just went off, so I'm going to let Dr. Del Rossi address that, but I'm going to have to, to cut you.
Yeah, that's, we talked about this in our meeting. Unfortunately, we don't have that luxury to, to make that change. Uh, Mr. Lock of Air referred to, we have the New Jersey Student Learning Standards that we have to, uh, adhere to. Um, just as, as you're telling me it's okay, I'm the parent, you heard the other parent who spoke about this prior to you. It was Karen who spoke a, a, about the, the need for having new subjects. So, you know, just, I, again, no easy answer. I can only live and die by the guidelines that are provided by the state.
Sure, but we did.
If we keep that mine, we can be held accountable for it.
But what about the kids that are, you know, that, that, all that stuff at home?
If we got guidelines from the, if it's the state Department of Education curriculum, we don't have a choice. And the repercussions could be loss of funding, which we can't afford.
Well, Mr. Adamson, when you see that, when you see your child's schedule, um, there may be some adjustments uh, in terms of the amount of time that has been spent. We're, we're having some discussions about those related arts areas at this time, but they're just as important to us as the other content areas.
I got to move this on. Next up is Allison.
Hi, how are you? Uh, my name is Allison. I just moved to 10 Sycamore Drive in Medford, and my daughter will be going to the Allen School. She'll be in first grade. Um, so like I said, we just moved in the middle of this pandemic, and we came from another school district. My children just went back to a local daycare in Medford. Um, so what Karen said, and I know that there's a before and after-school program here in Medford, um, with YMCA of the Pines, will you guys be in contact with the local daycares that also took students before and after to explain your program for them to be able to come up with a program for my kids or any of the other local kids that don't go to the Y or need an option um, for the before and after school, and will your buses run to those local daycares like they did before?
Um, Allison, I, I don't see any need in our past protocols, and we have a very close relationship with those preschools, uh, in the area. Uh, we have something called a Lunch and Learn that, um, has been instituted a couple of years back that, uh, they meet with our teachers on a pretty consistent basis, maybe four or five times a year, uh, to talk about. uh, to talk about programming and um, transitions to kindergarten. So um, we can gladly reach out to those preschools uh, in, in regards to your question. Yes, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Allison?
No, I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next up is Andrea.
Hi, Andrea Clark, uh, three hundred and eighty in Medford. Um, I have a couple of questions, and I'll try to run them quickly. The, um, at one point, you, your slideshow said something about how some of the teachers are choosing the leave of absence or telework. Um, what exactly is the telework that you were referring to? And what, will, will that be like, will they be doing online, doing their own online classes? Or are we paying, like, how are the leave of absence paid for? Is that through the FMLA Cares Act, or how, how is that funded?
Yeah, um, Mrs. Cornick, when I say telework, it's, it's, it's online virtual. And um, there's a number of different um, leaves that teachers will be available to. Um, some of it is paid, some of it is unpaid. But the telework that I was referring to would be, say, a, a teacher can't uh, can't work because of a medical condition, but they can work from home. So we will work, our human resources department is working with those teachers to try to come up with an option. Uh, we may not, you know, a teacher may be only highly qualified to be able to teach a certain subject. And we have a need for um, a, a different subject. And um, the, there's just not a need for the area in which they specialize in, or then they would have to most probably take a leave. And um, we'll, we'll work with those teachers individually in regards to those issues. Uh, because as you're well aware, elementary and middle school teachers are, are, middle school teachers are highly qualified in content areas. And elementary teachers don't hold those same certifications.
So if there is the off chance that um, you have, for example, there's six elementary school grades, and you have six teachers that are elementary school certified teachers, I'm not talking the middle school just yet, but um, would there be a chance that you would be able to fill each online class per grade with one of these online stu-, uh, teachers per grade? And that would alleviate the teachers who are in the classroom from having to deal with online lessons and potentially provide more time and attention to their classrooms?
Yes, Mrs. Cornick, I, I refer, I, I alluded to that earlier, maybe then I didn't explain that well enough. Yeah, that's a distinct possibility. You're talking about maybe a first grade teacher uh, or a couple of first grade teachers. If in fact that we had, for instance, sixty, seventy students that were doing online instruction. That's a pretty big number. Yet um, could they be working with students um, outside of their school to fill that void? Yes, we can do, we're gonna take a look at that. We really need to see what the numbers look like. And we've got to be fair to teachers in terms of their workload for online. Because, believe me, doing online instruction at full time is, especially with expectations that we're gonna have, is not gonna be an easy task.
Okay, um, now, I also wanted to ask uh, Rich about the educational standards. I know you've gone through the curriculum and sat down with me in detail in the past. Um, and you, you had said to me, you know, for example, on October fourteenth of any given year in fourth grade, every class in every district and across the whole district is supposed to be on the same schedule of October fourteenth, give or take a day for assemblies or whatever. Um, is that October fourteenth for this year gonna look the same as October fourteenth for last year? Basically, are our, is our standard of curriculum going to be the same as it was last year? Are we still going to be um, educating these children to the same extent that we were last year? Or is this a modified curriculum?
Andrea, uh, I wouldn't call it a modified curriculum. What, what I would say is that the, the pace will be modified. So we have teacher teams that um, are coming in throughout the summer to work on those pacing guides that you and I've talked about in the past. And they're, they're designing those pacing guides to take into account um, what happened at the end of last year. And to dr-, to adjust the pacing, to, to reflect where the children are that they're going to be receiving in September. Um, so I, I don't think it's reasonable, and from articles that I've read about this, I don't think it's reasonable to assume our kids are gonna be caught up by the end of this coming school year. I, I just, it's, it's not a realistic expectation for teachers or students. And um, uh, uh, the articles that I've read from professional journals are basically saying it's going to take two, three, maybe even four school years before kids are caught up to where they were. Um, or where they should be, I should say. So um, we are taking into account what, what the children, I don't want to say missed out on, but they, they did miss out on a lot because of uh, remote instruction. We're taking that into account with this pacing guide work that we're doing this summer. And um, trying to make it so that teachers can meet students where they are. And then, of course, we're expect, every year we have kids that need remediation in reading, writing, or math. Um, this year, we're, we're also gonna have kids that need it, it's going to be a higher number. So we're gonna do everything we can to address the needs of those students and get a handle uh, right from the, the jump in terms of what kids are, are behind and how far. And then working to get them um, back to where they should be as quickly as possible. But like I said, I don't think it's realistic to sit here and say that that, that's gonna happen in one school year.
I appreciate your honesty, Rich. Does it, is that just taking into account the lack of education towards the end of the school year? Or is that continuing throughout this future year? We believe that they're also gonna fall behind based on this new hybrid or whatever schedule.
So it's, it's primarily taking into account what happened last year. And of course, you, you know, you're, you're thinking along the right lines. You know, we, we really don't know, because this, let's face it, it's, it's an experiment. I'm not happy to call it that, but it's, maybe that's a bad word. It, it's a new approach, we've never done it this way before. Um, so we're, you know, I can't say how well or not it's going to go. I think it'll go much better than it did last year, whether families select one hundred percent remote or the hybrid model. But I just can't say at this point how effective it's going to be. So I, I, I am concerned that, you know, children are not gonna move along at the same rate that they would in a typical environment. And that's why we're just as anxious as our parents and our teachers to get the kids back to full day, everyday, in-person instruction as soon as the environment allows for it. Because then that's the only way that I can say, hey, we're gonna be able to do everything we used to and, and meet the needs of the kids. So it, it's gonna be a challenge, but the jury's still out in terms of how well or not it's going to work.
Okay, um, is there any training that's being provided for some of these technologically inept teachers? And I don't mean that in a bad way, I'm just saying sometimes the younger teachers do a better job with technology than some of the older teachers. And that's not all of the case, but generalizing. I know some of the teachers struggled with the technology. And if they're gonna be forced to teach more on technology, um, is, are you guys providing training for them? Or is there a way to survey, you know, the classes last year to find out if they felt that parents felt that the teachers were, were handling it okay? Or I, you know, something to make sure that everybody's kind of on the same playing field this year? Because I feel like a lot of those classes that had the teachers that weren't as technologically advanced suffered more than the classes that had the teachers that knew what they were doing.
Yeah, there's a couple of things that, that we're doing to address that. Um, we, we did two surveys uh, very early in the summer. One was sent to parents regarding their experience with remote learning. We got some good information from them. Um, and then we also surveyed our teachers in terms of what went well, what they struggled with. And we're using that information to um, design trainings. We have our district technology teachers working with our district technology coordinator and our educational technology coordinator and our technology coach on creating trainings and professional development opportunities for our teachers. And those um, trainings will be, be provided through a combination of webinars and a library of videos that they can watch for specific platforms and specific techniques. Some of those trainings will also be live. That's why we're hoping to have um, an additional teacher in-service day at the beginning of the year to provide some of that training to those teachers that need it. And then, of course, um, that afternoon time where, um, you know, when the children go home with the early dismissal schedule, we'll also be able to utilize that time to provide training for those teachers that um, you know, need more support in that area. The other thing that we're uh, working on is trying to have um, specific expectations for teachers in terms of how much live instruction will be required. Um, so that they know what the expectation is, so the principals know what the expectation is. And then we're all on the same page, and we can support the teachers to meet that goal.
Okay, um, can I ask, just generally speaking, on a, on a typical school year, how many hours a week does each child typically get in a core subject?
Um, I'd have to, I'd have to do some calculating to, to figure that out.
For example, math, you know, how many hours a week typically do they have their math on?
It, it would, at the elementary level, it would vary uh, between about an hour to maybe an hour and ten minutes a day. Um, but, you know, officially, what we're telling teachers is they should be spending an hour a day on, on math. So one of the things connected to that is in the um, expectations that we're putting together for teachers, we're building um, I guess you would call them recommended schedules that lay out how many minutes they should spend on uh, core academic subjects of reading, writing, and math. And again, this is at the elementary level. Um, so for math is a good example. You know, although the live instruction in the hybrid model will vary between uh, you know, an hour and fifteen minutes a day, either twice a week or three times a week, there'll also be a, a lesson that's, that's pushed out and, you know, work that's done connected to that lesson on the remote days. So that students should be spending about an hour uh, between the instruction they receive and the work they're doing, the, the independent practice work that they're doing. So um, the, the minutes should actually be quite close to what they would have in a typical school year. Of course, the big difference is on those remote days, um, there's not that same level of give and take that there would be in, in a regular environment. And of course, I'm talking about the um, the hybrid model. In the one hundred percent virtual model, the minutes will be uh, almost the same. But we are expecting more live instruction so that there is that give and take. Um, and, and students can get their questions answered, teachers can do additional modeling, um, things like that. And then at the middle school level, um, you know, the, the minutes requirement, we're still developing that in concert with uh, middle school principals and the teachers. But our goal is, is to try to get the, the overall minutes to be as close to a regular school year as they possibly can be. What will vary is, is the method of instructional delivery, depending on the hybrid model or the hundred percent remote model, whichever is selected.
So the hybrid model, when you are on your off day, you still have the afternoon live instruction?
There may be some live instruction. For example, one of the things we're definitely going to do is require um, an office hour period where students will have a chance to meet with their teacher live and ask questions. Or it might be a small group that the, the teacher's working with. But because um, teachers are gonna be working with their, their live students in school throughout the morning, I would expect that in the hybrid model on the remote days, there'll be more pre-recorded lessons um, than there would be if a teacher's devoting all their time to remote uh, instruction. So um, the, there'll be more pre-recorded in the hybrid model on the remote days than there would be if a student's one hundred percent remote. The details of that is what we're working on with uh, principals and their teacher teams.
Okay, and I, and I know I said this multiple times when we met last week, and I know it's been reiterated here again, and I just want to say it again. I don't think that gym and music and um, art and all of those subjects, tech lab, whatever. Um, actually, we didn't even have tech lab when the mix was shut down, and I think we should have. Um, I don't think that they're not important. I, I think they're very important. I think they should be a part of the curriculum, and I think they should continue to be a part of the curriculum. Our point is that they should not be something that we're wasting valuable face-to-face time with our, our teachers. We're, we're now eliminating the time that our kids that struggle with math and don't have parents who can help with math are now struggling at home teaching them math when in, we, I mean, I'm not, I'm not discounting. I know that in education at home is, we can never be equal to any teacher of any subject, special or core. Obviously, the teachers are teachers and certified for a reason, and I respect them. I, but I do think that when it comes to the core subjects like math, science, social studies, reading, writing, that they, they need a teacher to teach them. And, and a parent cannot do that from home as easily as a parent can teach gym from home or math, or uh, music from home, or uh, art from home.
Um, I'm gonna have, your timer went off, so I'm gonna have to end your, your five minutes.
I don't know that I have seconds, but that's okay. Um, I also, can I just say real quick that I'm, I'm, I'm a little disappointed the survey didn't go out last week? There was, there was a whole week that the survey had to go out. And I feel like the reason, part of the reason it didn't go out was so that you could say tonight that you didn't have the information to give us.
Well, that's not.
Thank you.
So.
And Andrea, with regard to, with regard to that, um, the reason that we didn't send out the survey sooner is that when the governor came out on July twentieth and uh, announced that a one hundred percent remote option would need to be offered, at that time, he had said that the Department of Education would be providing additional guidance by the end of the week. Uh, Dr. Del Rossi and I were waiting Friday uh, at one o'clock with bated breath to find out what that guidance would be. And unfortunately, as, as happened in the past, um, when he came on and he turned the microphone over to the acting commissioner of education, uh, the guidance really turned out to be nothing more than a repeat of the requirement to offer one hundred percent virtual. So I'm just as upset as you are, because I thought there might be some things that we could tell our parents and incorporate into the survey. And all we got was uh, a re-repeating of what the governor said Monday. So that put us four days behind, and so now we're scrambling to get it out uh, tomorrow. But it, it's ready to go. While, while we're in the meeting, my educational technology coordinator emailed me and said it's ready to go. So I would expect that, that parents will have that um, hopefully by the, the late morning tomorrow. And we can jump on that right away.
Okay, um, who's up next? Robin Carter. Robin, are you out there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Robin Carter, I live at two forty Church Road here in Medford. Um, I am the mother of a soon-to-be seventh grader at Memorial, and I'm also a longtime assistant in the district um, at Kirby Smith. And Dr. Del Rossi, you had mentioned to Barbara Wyland about our role being an important one in the district as far as um, helping with remote learning.
Yes.
If we went to one hundred percent remote as we were with the shutdown, what would the assistant role become then? Because we didn't have one, and we've been on unemployment, which unfortunately, not many people wanted to be on. You know, despite what you hear of all this extra money, we would have rather been with the kids. So is there an option for us to be with the kids again in some capacity if we went to one hundred percent remote?
Yeah, Robin, um, of course, that, that's a discussion we have to get into with uh, ESS. Uh, and we don't know what the need is going to be, is right, because the field has changed. And we don't know what the need is going to be, is right, because the field has changed. Would that be considered? Absolutely. I can't guarantee you one way or another, but it's something that we've thought about already and 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 realize there are some cases that the need would be greater than others. So I don't want to qualify that at this point, but I want you to know it's something that we've been thinking about. And I appreciate you bringing that up because I know that's been a concern, and I know what the rumor has been out there in terms of, well, they made out better than they would if they were working and paid by the district and so forth. But I know our assistants, they want to be with our students, they want to be back in school, and they want to make a difference.
Absolutely.
You know, I appreciate you bringing that up. And I can only tell you that it would be something that we had invested in, for sure.
I appreciate that. I also wanted to comment on the people who are concerned about their kindergarteners wearing masks all day. Having worked with kindergarten first grade only in the classroom, I deal with other grades for much recess, but having dealt with just five, six, and seven-year-olds, the difficulty of them keeping it on their face is just as much as the difficulty of them not picking their nose, not touching everything in sight, not staying in their seat. People are saying it's so easy if they don't have to wear a mask if they just stay in their seat. Well, you and I both know kindergarten, first, second, all the way up 10th grade, they don't just stay in their seats. And so I truly, for one, appreciate that they are going to be required to wear masks for my safety as well as theirs and all of our families. So I really do appreciate the change in that because that was a huge concern to us because we know they're they're children. They they're not robots. They don't sit in a chair and stare at a teacher for eight hours a day. So I do appreciate that.
Well, thank you. And Robin, for all those reasons that you just mentioned, that's why it's so important to have the numbers as less as we possibly can in terms of the classroom enrollment. That's the key. Because the less students we that have in the classroom, the more we're able to attend to those issues. So thank you.
I just really want to say, I feel like this meeting has been a lot of negativity towards you. I don't know what meeting people are referring to as far as last week. I, as a parent and.
Our parents, Rich and I had.
Okay, yeah, I I knew nothing about that. But this is changing every single day for all of us. I know since March, being an assistant, being a mom, we've had to do things differently from the get-go, and none of it has been easy as a household, as a school, as a classroom, and certainly as a district. So I just want to thank everyone on the board and you and Rich for everything that's being done, because I don't feel like there's enough credit being given to how ridiculously hard these decisions are with no good outcome. You know, we're all fighting through this, and there's not one good answer. So I just want to give you guys credit for the fact that I know that you have the children and the staff's utmost safety and importance at heart. So shout out to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean, do you have anyone else?
I do not. Just Mr. Rowan made a comment about.
Is there anyone else out there?
No.
Three points.
Who hasn't spoken? Who has a question or?
I submitted questions. Robert Horn, did you get my questions that emailed them earlier? Did you?
Well.
Yeah, Mike, those were the ones I got during the meeting that I put on the website. So I don't know if you all had a chance to look at them. But since you're on, if you want to just read it, that would be fine, or I can.
All right, thank you. My name is Robert Horn. I'm a father of two kids in in the district, 35 Buffalo Run. I'm also a teacher with 25 years' experience. I'm concerned a lot about the safety of coming back to school. I'm going to look at the talk about the HVAC systems. Many public schools have outdated or inadequate HVAC systems, I noticed from my own district. Without proper HEPA filtration and air exchange, air conditioning can help virus particles circulate despite the best social distancing protocols. In the school where I work, not in Medford, the HVAC units have very cheap and flimsy filters that don't filter the air, the virus particles. I'm concerned that it's not safe at this time if students and staff in enclosed spaces like classrooms for prolonged prolonged periods of time, like a four- to six-hour school day, especially with inadequate HVAC systems. From what I've read about the spread of the virus, I mean, obviously, it spreads through droplets in the air, as you all know, and virus needs proximity and duration, both of which it will have in the classroom. So I'm concerned that even if all members of the school community practice social distancing, the virus particles in the classroom would have more than enough time to circulate and find a target. I'd like to know, I have a series of questions on this topic. What's the condition of the HVAC systems in the Medford schools? What types of filters are used and how often are they replaced? And if the HVAC systems do not provide high-capacity air filtration and exchange, will there be some solution to this, such as a high-capacity HEPA air purifier being installed in every classroom, office, and workspace?
Is John on?
Johnny's director did answer this. Dr. Del Rossi, John, are you still on? Do you want him to take this, Dr. D?
If he would like, or would he like to speak to Mr. Rowan privately? But I think other people may be interested in this question as well. John, do you want to answer this question at this time?
Yeah, I don't have a problem taking the question. I I did respond to it in writing.
Yes.
But I will expound.
Was it my email?
No, he gave it to me, and I forwarded it to, I just forwarded John's answer to the board president. But John, since he's here, we might as well let him read his answer.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so, Robert, you know, some of our facilities are older. You know, Allen School being almost, what, 92 years old, 93 years old? So it's definitely a concern. All of our systems, though, have been upgraded over the years and as well as some of our control systems. So all of our buildings, because they provide 100% heat and cooled space, do comply with current ASHRAE 62.1 standards, which gives you a certain cubic feet, fifty, for classroom space, that's 15 cubic feet of air per minute per occupant, and that's based on the maximum occupancy of the room. So our our buildings have been, you know, are all compliant. With that, we do routinely, as part of our indoor air quality program, periodically monitor CO2 levels in certain spaces randomly, which is an indication of how those systems are functioning. Because the original intent of, you know, bringing in fresh air and exhausting stale air in the building was to dissipate the CO2 that people breathe out in an enclosed space. So that is something that we monitor. And it is something that even in our oldest facility, like Allen, we do have remote capability via our BAS systems to force those dampeners when conditions allow, even over the minimum set points. So, you know, if it's a day when it's 60 and and low humidity out, we can certainly drive those dampers open more than the minimum requires to bring in even more fresh air. Of course, on a day when it's like it was today, that would really tax our system, and we would have to balance that with the ambient conditions. In terms of filtration, we use a Marv8 filter. It's made by a company called Tridem. It's a three-ply filter. It's not a HEPA filter, but it's not your typical, just real flimsy fiberglass filter either. It's not the cheapest of the cheap, and it's not a HEPA filter. A lot of our DX cooling systems, if you were to put a filter that restrictive on it, it couldn't take the reduction in airflow and would likely cause the coils to ice and and a host of other problems. So that that's not something that all of our systems would be designed to handle across the board. But we do use, we do use a a higher-quality filter than I think you you would probably have seen in maybe your own district. And I can certainly share you, share some links and and some information on those products. Does that answer all your questions? Or do you have any other questions?
John's scheduled to change those filters. He did ask about that.
Yeah, I, yeah, my district, they change them every three months. I don't know how often they change them at Medford. But I'm I'm just concerned with, like, even with the the higher three-ply filter, that's going to be inadequate to filter virus particles. I know we had a lot of problems in my district years ago with with the HVAC systems because they weren't properly exchanging the air to trap mold spores. There wasn't enough air exchange, and many people got sick from mold. So this is a whole new animal. So those POSHA and OSHA requirements for airflow and CO2, I know a lot about what you're talking about, and I appreciate that. I don't think that this is a whole new game. I don't think it's, I'm very concerned about us sending staff and students into schools and assuming that the air quality is going to be safe as far as COVID viral particles. I don't have any confidence that it is. I haven't heard enough that it is. But, I mean, if you want to address this another time, have I gone over my time or do I have, can I make a final comment?
You can make a final comment.
Okay, I just, I did want to say that virtual instruction was one of the most challenging things I've ever done. It tripled my workload in in the spring. We had to spend so much more time communicating, creating creative lesson plans, learning the technology, implementing technology, and mostly communicating with parents, guidance counselors, administrators, kids, giving feedback on work. It was a relentless workload that, you know, went all day and all night if you didn't catch yourself. Fortunately, I had established an excellent rapport with my students prior to the school closure in March, and I did pretty well with the remote instruction. Don't get me wrong, we would love to come back in September and establish rapport with a new group of kids, because I'm really worried about how do you start 100% virtual if you haven't established that rapport first? It's going to be a challenge. But I will say that, as Dr. Del Rossi said earlier on in the meeting, when you put those two choices out there, you know, superb instructional, you know, flow versus the safety and health of everybody involved, I'm gonna side with the health and safety. Because I know, I know as a teacher that being in person, there's no substitute for that. Virtual, no matter how well you do it, virtual, it is not the same thing. However, if I am, if I believe that it's not safe for us to go back in September, I would opt for that in a second if it makes it safe for me, my family, my students, and my colleagues.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you all for everything you're doing, because I know, being on the inside, Dr. Del Rossi, Mr. LaFara, all of you, as Robin Carter said a few minutes ago, these decisions you're making, you're making are excruciating. I would not want to be in your shoes. And this is uncharted waters, and thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you, Mr..
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Do we have anyone else out there?
No, I haven't heard from anyone.
Okay, as you can see, I thought it was important enough to not cut it at 30 minutes or 60 minutes. It's a tough time, so I let it go.
Dr. Redder, I did hear a mention that we had discussed earlier, in light of the information that we're going to get from the survey and wanting to deal, I mean, work with the, with our restart reopening committee, that we move a next Monday's meeting to the 10th of August. So that would give us time to complete the other sections of the plan and hopefully have them submitted to the board for approval on that on that date. So I want the board to consider moving next Monday's meeting to the 10th.
We will consider that. All right, at this time, I am going to ask or motion to adjourn.
So moved, moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppositions? All right, thank you all for being with us this evening. Everybody keep the faith. We're going to get through this somehow, some way. We will get through this. We always do. This will be no different. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Thank you.